Can you hear me?
Yes.
Let's bring the meeting to an end. We would like to give this rise and join the collective leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands on a nation, on a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Reed, can you read the open public?
At this notice, this meeting of the township council of the township of Roxbury was given as far by the Republican meetings act as follows. On December 16, 2013, those were facts of the daily record, the North Star legend Roxbury Register of Public in the daily record. Notice it also remain posted throughout here on the bullet point in the main hallway of the municipal building. At this notice, the change location of this meeting is given as far by the Republican meetings act as follows. On March 7, 2014, those were facts of the daily record, the North Star legend Roxbury Register of Public in the daily record posted on the township website and posted on the bullet point in the main hallway of the municipal building.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Beck, Mr. Crowley, Mr. Dee Coliva, Mr. Hall, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. So Schmidt, Mayor Riley.
Here.
We're going to try to get into the presentation as quickly as possible, but I just wanted to take care of a couple items here. First, I'd like to thank Bob Martin, Commissioner Bob Martin from the DEP for recognizing that we deserve both you and us to have this meeting in the public. So I'd like to thank you for that and the staff coming out here today. Just so you guys can be prepared for the public session after the presentation, the reason I'm bringing this up now is so you can prepare for it. Obviously, a lot of people are there that have a lot of questions. So after the presentation is done, we'll open up to the public. I'll need you to say your name and address for the record on the mic so our staff can do travel. I need everybody to three minutes and keep in mind after that, if comments or questions, hopefully questions since the DEP is here, ready to answer those questions, move on. There are a lot of people here, so I'd like to get to everybody that has questions. So I'm only going to go through the group once, no deferring of time or things like that. I think it's fair of everybody to get an opportunity. When we get done sooner than that, we'll open it up. I'm going to take advantage of the full amount of time. The DEP has agreed to stay here until 10 o'clock. We won't let them leave in the middle of the night. And at 10 o'clock doesn't mean your questions have to stop. It means your questions have to stop this evening. Or you can go home and send them to the DEP and they'll have it set up on their website sooner than later. So I respect everybody, hopefully we keep in public portion, especially if we allow everybody to get an opportunity to speak. I know I look forward to hearing everybody's comments. And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce Ed Butler from the DEP to introduce the people that are with him. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Ed Butler. I'm Assistant Director with the Department of Environmental Protection, Environmental Program. Tonight, we are here to make our presentation on long-term planning. We have also had two other presentations requested by the town. But it's often regarded as a side-by-side comparison of the capital alternative and excavation. I also have a quick presentation that the mayor asked us to address to other major sites of the race, Cuddy Field, Landville, Softwood, Florida. But I also want to let you know, these presentations, as well as GeoSynTech's whole report, will be on the DEP's webpage tomorrow. And we have a mail box for people to ask questions and submit comments. So we'll have that for people who would like to, they'll be able to go on the web tomorrow and re-review these, review the report. We'll say that the specific design documents related to Burger's report are not publicly available until they are actually put up on the Department of Treasury's procurement webpage. We have some on our procurement rules, but once they're up, we'll give them transfer over to the DEP's webpage. The webpage is newjersey.gov/DEP/county. And I'll repeat that a couple more times during the day. And again, in our daily updates, is our mailbox, Roxbury Township, Roxbury Township, one more question. So and again, tomorrow, we have the daily update tomorrow that we give the town, will have the webpage posted for that. So with that, I'll be first introduce Tom Ramsey. Tom is with GeoSynTech. He'll be doing the side-by-side presentation. And Chris Corliss of Burger will be doing the details on the planning.
Mr. Butler, before you move forward, council is going to take a seat down. We'll also take a seat report as well as very accessible. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom Ramsey. I work with GeoSynTech consultants. And my part was to take it by the state of New Jersey to provide independent consulting. Through the review of various payment options that are available to mitigate the likely sulfide gas emissions that are causing public foul orders related to this facility. So to give you a brief outline of my presentation, quickly, I just want to give you background information regarding hydrogen sulfide gas and how it was created at the site. Then give you my evaluation of the different payment options and then provide my summary of conclusions. The hydrogen sulfide gas is created in Fenimore. It comes from drywall sheet rock. This drywall sheet rock is made from, mostly made from gypsum, which is calcium sulfate dihydrate. It's a naturally occurring mineral. It's very common. And as we all know in our homes, it's commonly, it's used for sheet rock ubiquitously throughout the United States. With this material, though, when it gets wet, the sulfate portion of the gypsum can become soluble in water. Once it becomes soluble in water, it is then available for bacteria to then consume. So what happens is when you have drywall sheet rock, especially it's been ground up, so there's a lot of surface area associated with it, and it gets buried under the ground. What happens is, is the air that was originally around that sheet rock disappears and it becomes without air, or otherwise known as anaerobic, the absence of air. And when we have anaerobic conditions, naturally occurring bacteria that are below the ground, and you have gypsum that gets wet, then you have the ability of that bacteria to begin to consume the sulfate on the gypsum to create hydrogen sulfide gas. And that, those, the three of those things are obviously present at this facility. And that is what has caused the odors that everyone has had this suffer through. Next slide. The records, factual information, the records from Strategic Environmental Partners regarding the facility, there's over 375,000 yards of fill material brought into the site. Of that, more half of it were construction demolition debris finds that contain that gypsum. And about 60% of it came in before superstorm season. From my estimation, once that material is buried, it's a matter of only a few months before hydrogen sulfide gas can be generated. Once that gas is generated inside the fill, what happens is there's a lot of void space in that fill. And that void space originally has been there, and then it gets displaced by hydrogen sulfide gas. And then over a matter of months, eventually that all void space in that filter that becomes filled with gas, and now that hydrogen sulfide has no place to go except into the air. And once it got into the air, and obviously that's where the odors started to show up, which my understanding were in the late summer and then especially into the fall, which makes sense with the beginning of hydrogen sulfide gas starting in the spring. Measurements that have been taken on the site, samples that have been taken of the gas inside the landfill, have showed hydrogen sulfide concentrations above 250,000 parts per million. That is 25% by volume, and that's an extremely high concentration of hydrogen sulfide gas. So I was asked to review three options. Essentially, this is essentially what can be done with the facility in the current condition where it is. The first thing to be considered is doing a targeted removal, where you try to find the gypsum containing materials, especially if they are concentrated in certain spots, try to remove that and then cap what's left over. Second option is to remove all of the fill materials and just take it all off-site for disposal if it's a remote facility. And then third option is to leave it in place and cap it. And then because it stays in place, you have to collect the gas that was generated and treated on-site. With the garden, first option, looking at the idea of targeted removal of the gypsum containing materials, the first thing you've got to ask is where is it? If we're going to do a targeted removal, it needs to be either a concentrated spot, or it needs to be maybe just on the top surface of the landfill so that you can skim it off. So the first thing I did is I took the records from the Strategic Environmental Partners, who are maintaining, are in the fill receipts of the site, and looked at where the gypsum containing materials were placed. If you look on the site, look at the blue graphic that's out here, as you can see, the vast majority of the site took gypsum containing fill four, five, or six months at a time. And as a result of that, it seems pretty obvious that these materials are scattered pretty much all through the site, a little bit depth, even all over the site. So when you take a look at that, the fact that it's all over the place, I think it's pretty obvious to everyone that the idea of the targeted removal focused on gypsum containing materials is not really feasible. And if it's not feasible, then there's no point in doing a cost estimate. We'll be talking about cost estimate as our other two options that they were inviting. So we move on out of option two, which is the removal of all fill material from Fenimore and taking it to a landfill somewhere off-site and disposing it there. And the reason I want to show, start with a photograph, is this photograph is what a pretty typical operation looks like when you are actually excavating waste inside the landfill. As you can see in this slide, there's a lot of heavy equipment, it's out moving materials, you've got large excavators that are used to remove it. You've got trucks that are coming through, you've got to create access roads for those trucks in order to get loaded. And the important thing to remember on this is that this is not like digging a hole. And if you're digging a hole, you've got a flat surface, and you get in there, it goes down. Those of you who are familiar with Fenimore, you know that it's built up, it's a mound that's been built up on top of the ground. So as a result, there are a lot of steep slopes out there, and the excavation is going to require those steep slopes and uneven surfaces will be the fact of what it takes to remove those materials. So keep that in mind as we move forward. So as we then look in my analysis, next slide, on my analysis of then what would be the result of when we have removal of all fill materials. First thing is, we've already documented a very high concentrations of hydrogen sulfide gas in this fill material. If you're going to excavate it, remove it, that hydrogen sulfide gas is going to skirt up and it's going to get released into the air. That's obvious. You're digging things up, you're having to load it into a truck, and then it's getting hauled off the site. Those very high concentrations of gas, in my opinion, are going to make it very likely the community is going to continue to suffer with some very serious odor issues that you've already suffered with previously on the site. And then the other thing that goes on from there is that, once that hydrogen sulfide gas is loaded into a truck, all the gas that went in contained in that, in those pore spaces is not released immediately. You can imagine it's loaded out of the truck, maybe most of it comes out at 80, 90%, but there's still some hydrogen sulfide gas stuck in those pore spaces of that material. That truck then leaves the site and drives down public roads to get to the, to get on the highway, to travel off of the landfill. Hydrogen sulfide gas is going to be leaking out of that truck as well. So we're going to have odor issues, not just in the immediate area around Fenimore landfill, but you're also going to have odor issues in the access roads that lead from it as these trucks leave the site. Very high levels of hydrogen sulfide gas have gone on the site, and there will be some very extensive safety protocols required for the people that are operating there, the construction workers on the site. I would expect that is going to require supply air for everyone there. They have to have their own air supply, that's maybe exposed that hydrogen sulfide gas. So you're talking about that for the heavy equipment operators and for the truckers, once they approach the area where the excavation is going on, and when they get their trucks loaded up. All of that activity is going to really slow down the construction because of all the safety protocols. So and that result of that is, I think realistically, you're looking at about a 16-month period for what it would take to remove all of the materials from the site and truck it off to a landfill in this off-site. So this issue of excavation, potential hydrogen sulfide gas, could now cause relapse for that entire period. Another important thing to remember is the existing gas collection system that is out there right now. That system would have to be shut down and stable while this work is going on. So as a result, once that, that system is shut down, now you have the ability to control the gases in the, in the materials that are left in the site before they're excavated. You've lost that ability to control that gas. So now we're looking at potentially having gas escaping the site, not just when the construction is going on, but potentially having odor issues 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the result of the fact that the gas control system also has to be shut down during construction. Well, one idea that's can be thrown out there is, well, you know, let's cover this excavation, right? Let's get a temporary structure over top of it, and then we can collect the gas inside that structure and treat it before we release it out into the air. These structures do exist, typically like large metal scaffolds that then have family materials placed over them. They're commonly used in remediation projects, you can get large equipment into these buildings. But the problem with these buildings is, as everyone knows, a building needs to be built on a well foundation. We don't put our buildings on steep slopes, nor can you put temporary buildings on steep slopes. So as a result of that, there'd be a lot of effort in order to build up a foundation that you could then place this building on top of. And if you didn't have it, plus the rough uneven slopes that are all over the site during this excavation, it'd be very difficult to make that structure airtight so that you could contain all the gases inside of it. And then finally, also remember, the structure as you're excavating, you've got 19 acres of material that would have to be removed. So you're going to excavate a piece, move over, excavate a piece, move over, excavate a piece, move over. Every time you do that, you've got to take this building down, you've got to move it over, put it back up, set everything back on it again. And I think realistically, it's just not feasible to expect that we could have some sort of contained structure over the site in order to control the gases during excavation. So the result of that is, again, you're stuck with this circumstance. If you're going to remove all the waste off the site, you're looking at having hydrogen sulfide gas on the control bases getting into the air during that construction period. I was asked to take a look at what I thought the estimate cost would be to remove all the materials off-site. Here's a quick summary of it. I've got five summary items that I put together. The total of $38.7 billion. The vast majority of that, obviously, goes in two items. One is excavation, trucking of the fill. You've got 375,000 yards of fill that has to go off-site. That is a very large earthmoving project. And then that 375,000 cubic yards of fill has to be trucked to a landfill for disposal. The nearest facility is about 40 miles away, nearest commercial facility is about 40 miles away in Pennsylvania. I think as everybody knows out here, disposal is not cheap. It's expensive in this part of the world. So as a result of that, you've got a pretty heavy price tag. So again, just to go through the conclusions, from my own assessment of what would be the result of trying to truck all of the Burgers off-site. I think there's a very high probability of going to have uncontrolled releases of significant amounts of hydrogen sulfide gas. So the summer that everyone has had to go through would have to continue for another 16 months while all this excavation is going on. In addition to that, you're looking at a huge amount of truck traffic that would pull 375,000 yards of material off this site and going through the neighborhood. And those trucks are going to be smelly as well as they're going through the neighborhood. So it's not just closed immediately and you can hear that. Obviously, we've got hydrogen sulfide gas, which is an health issue, you've got exposure to workers, it'll be on the site and a pretty heavy price tag. Next slide. So the last option I was asked to look at is the idea of leaving the materials in place and doing the closure cap. Luke's merger is going to have a more detailed discussion about the capping options, so I'm going to try to go quickly through it. Essentially, you're looking at free phase dissection project. Next slide. The first phase, which will occur here immediately, will be to expand and enhance the gas collection system. More than triple the number of gas wells that are out there. The idea is to then have the gas well spread throughout the site so that you can collect the gas from the entire limits of fill. And that is supposed to be getting started here within the next couple of weeks, being finished by the end of May. Once that's in place, you have an improved, ass to improve gas collection system. And during the summertime, it will then be have break during construction, which will operate, move in the next phase, which is moving soils in in order to begin closure cap. So my expectations are that this system, once it's in, is that it will greatly improve even the improvements that have gone on out there already with the gas collection systems in there. And then once we get to find a capping of the site, the vast majority of all the gases being generated out there will be collected and treated. Next slide. One of the advantages of in-place capping is that it minimizes the disruption of landfills. I talked before, the pore spaces in that landfill right now are all containing hydrogen sulfide gas and very high concentrations. We don't disturb it, that gas doesn't be released. During the summertime, the idea would be to move, it's not called clean soil, or the site in a measured pace. So during the summer months when people are outside trying to avoid children, you don't have truck traffic rolling through all hours of the day and night. The next thing that happens starting in the fall is the installation of an impermeable plastic liner that goes over the 28 or 19-acre fill area. And that, that thick plastic impermeable liner provides really a three-fold benefit as far as managing the problems that this site has created. And the first thing that it does is it provides a very effective barrier to hydrogen sulfide gas. The gas cannot get through that plastic, so it's encapsulated within the fill. The next thing that it does is by encapsulating it in the fill, that existing gas collection system now becomes much more effective and is moving forward effectively with gas. The last thing that that area does is it prevents rainy water from getting into the fill. And as I talked before, you needed, you needed the gypsum containing material, you needed conditions without air, and we needed moisture in order for hydrogen sulfide gas to be created. Well, if you dry out that fill material, you've taken away one of those three things that's required for the generation of gas. So we will greatly slow down the generation of gas in the site. It can get easier to manage in the long term. And that would all be completed by December of this year, as opposed to an excavation, I mentioned before, means 16 months to the stretch, well, in 2015. Then the finish of the capping will involve placing cover soil with an impermeable plastic liner and then getting the gas established. And once the closure cap is installed, the last thing to be done will be remove the existing oxidizer scrub treatment systems that's out there. And then you can replace that with a different technology, smaller in scale, and designed to more, you know, more focused and optimized for reduced levels of gas generation that we expect. And Luke's merger will talk a little bit more about that from up. And then after that, obviously, on the long-term maintenance, because you've got a closed landfill at that point. Luke's merger prepared a cost estimate for the closure capping option. Again, it's just a more quick, more bullet items, a sort of general ideas, and that cost estimate for the closure work over 28 years is less than $8 billion. Again, my conclusions on the closure cap, I think it's got some advantages out there because it provides a continuous ability to collect hydrogen sulfide gas that can generate out there and be treated, as opposed to having a system shut down. It minimizes disturbance of the fill out there. It provides a complete encapsulation of fill by the end of this year, as opposed to waiting until 2015. Significantly reduces truck traffic, both overall and on the other basis. I mean, that's obviously one, if you don't have 375,000 yards of material, ooh, that obviously takes a lot of trucks off the road. And all the emissions associated with those trucks. Let's not forget, these are diesel trucks, so you've got diesel emissions associated with that. In addition, it reduces the gas generation potential by drying out the site. And in my opinion, it significantly reduces the potential exposure to the community for hydrogen sulfide gas. So in summary, just to go through things here quickly, as I talked before, the targeted excavation of trying to find gypsum, just targeted excavation of gypsum containing fill is literally not feasible at this point. I do think that full excavation of the landfill would result in an uncontrolled release of hydrogen sulfide gas in the community. And that would be going on, despite the best efforts of everyone to try to minimize it, I would still expect that you're going to see odor issues in the community and on the roads out from the site for 16 months. And then it would require about 20,000 to 25,000 truck trips in order to remove that 375,000 yards of material. And then obviously, the cost would be about five times that of the annual cost. My final slide, again, just summarizes points, again, regarding the closure cap. I think it reduces the risks to workers, obviously, because we did it a little up. And I think it reduces the risk upon, since we're not exposing that, we're not feeding that much gas. Obviously, it can be completed without disrupting improvements that have already been made to the gases to try to collect and treat the gases that's going on right now on-site. Completed in a shorter timeframe, so this thing can be settled by the end of this year, as we're probably dragging on well into 2015 as well. And it'll certainly reduce truck traffic in the community. Those are my assessments.
Thanks, Larry. I'm going to just add two other landfill sites. One here in Jersey, one for that, have been brought to the attention of the department as being several instances where excavation occurred. And if so, if you could do it there, I could introduce you here at Fenimore. So let me, let me basically try to compare and contrast those landfills for you. Let me start on the F E Field Superbun site. It is basically the ball. That was the site. Couple of features I want to point out is it is much smaller than we have here at Fenimore. And it is, as known, much closer. The original remedy for this site wasn't in cap, was to cap the site and to improve both the gas collection and a leachate collection system. So the site has a leachate collection system that Fenimore doesn't need. During the design of that, they realized that they were also going to be dealing with substantial methane concentrations migrating towards those homes. That's also a distinction we have here between the site and Fenimore. So again, it's a much smaller site, it's only three and a half acres. The material was not gypsum. It did not exceed any construction demolition screening or reliable. There was some substantial, there were substantial concentrations of hydrogen sulfide. But there was also explosive levels of methane and in close proximity to those homes. The quantity was obviously much smaller, and even in light of this, it still took two years to complete the job, and the cost was about $16 million. Second landfill in Pensacola, Florida, I believe is pronounced Softway landfill. We believe it's pronounced Softaway landfill. This slide right here is actually something you downloaded off of the internet. This was a presentation given by Escondia County Public Works Department in anticipation of the work that they did out of the landfill. This is an artist rendition of what it would be going to look like at the end after they're running. Next slide. This landfill did take C and D three after a couple hurricanes that had down there in Florida. They then started getting hydrogen sulfide gas. There were significant concentrations. You mentioned that a home nearby, so that problem, you take action. They did remove approximately two hundred twenty thousand cubic yards of material. But the significant part of that is the material they removed did not contain any drywall. The drywall was at a much greater depth. And what they basically took about a year to do, and they were able to do it fairly inexpensively, I'll mention that again later. So what they did, and Softway, is they basically excavated this ground so that they could get a flat surface. Once they had the flat surface, they did what we are proposing to do at Fennel. They put an impermeable liner over it in order to trap the gas in and keep the water So Fennelmore, what makes Fennelmore distinctive is the extremely high levels of hydrogen sulfide gas that we're detecting in the material. It is more than fifty percent containing waste that contains sulfuric material. We have much larger volume, larger figure, and the cost is about thirty million. So kind of to summarize, you don't really need to read this chart necessarily. Again, these presentations will be out on the web tomorrow, or you can review. This is basically just a summary of the different items we have, but so we can review it in more detail if you want to go along. So Fennelmore has certainly greater construction demolition screening than any of the other sites, than any other site before. Fennelfield doesn't have any significantly higher levels of H2S. Softwood landfill, the excavated material oxygenated, any drywall, and Fennelfield's cost on a per acre basis was exorbitant. So I want to turn it over to Chris Corles from Berger, who's going to go into more detail on the landfill department as we continue.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name is Chris Corles, and I work at Louis Berger, and I'm the manager of the Solid Services Group. I've been working on behalf of the NJDP to develop a landfill closure design, and that's what I'm going to like to do, is to discuss that idea. I'm going to break my talk into three basic categories. First, I'm going to discuss closure and its purpose and what it is. Next, I'm going to go into a summary of the project phases, and then I'm going to wrap things up with a discussion of the anticipated schedule. Fennelmore was opened as a private sanitary landfill in the mid nineteen fifties, except it municipal solid waste through approximately nineteen seventy-nine. However, at that point, the landfill was not properly closed. The overall goal of closure is to protect human health and the environment. The main objective is to keep the landfill as dry as possible and minimize the infiltration of water into the fill. In addition, by drying out the waste, diminishing the hydrogen sulfide production migration. There are federal regulations and state regulations that govern landfill closure. In general, landfill closure provides engineered measures to minimize rainwater infiltration or gas production migration. Also, the closure provides a stormwater management system to help control runoff and storm erosion. In addition, gas management systems are installed as part of closure. The project phasing can be broken into three phases. The first two phases are associated with landfill closure, and the third phase is the long-term gas treatment and monitoring after closure. Phase one, well, phase one is associated with the gas well and hydrant installation. And phase two is going to be associated with the capping liner installation. This landfill closure addresses the fill material that was brought in by strategic environmental partners. As shown on the area, the gray area represents that, the fill material that was brought on the site. This area is approximately nineteen acres. The yellow line that's depicted around it is the limit of disturbance associated with phase two, the liner construction. That area will be approximately twenty-two acres. The reason for the additional disturbance is to accommodate stormwater and drainage Upon taking control of the site, the NJDP installed temporary stormwater controls and applied a posi shell on the fill material. This is a spray-applied material, and it was applied to reduce odor, minimize odor or reduce the odors, improve or to try to reduce the water infiltration into the fill material and stabilize and prevent submersion. In addition, the posi shell changes colors in the presence of hydrogen sulfide. So the hydrogen sulfide that was in the fill material that migrates up to the ground surface, posi shell had changed color. As a result, the DDP installed nine extraction points that are highlighted by the blue squares in these locations that indicated a presence as a urgent emergency measure. The extraction points were then connected to a series of pipes and to the existing treatment area. The first phase will include installing twenty-one additional wells to the nine existing gas extraction points. These wells will vary in depth between ten feet and thirty feet below ground surface. There will be valves and ports added to all location to monitor and adjust the gas collection. The bowing will enable targeted gas collection during our operation. The wells were selected to supplement and fill existing coverage gaps that the existing gas extraction points, coverage gaps. The line representing, the purple line, represents approximately one hundred twenty-five foot radius of influence for subsurface gas collection. Once the system is installed, there'll be a constant vacuum on the landfill. And this system, once it's installed and operational, will remain operational during the second phase of this project, the capping liner installation. And as shown on the figure, you can also see that there's, as far as the coverage, there's an overlap in the radius of influence to obtain complete collection coverage. Once the bows are installed, they will be connected to a series of piping. This piping will also have a valve on it to adjust collection rates based on the operation. And the system will be a new system with an additional header arm or pipe that connects to the treatment system. In addition, during this phase one, there will be a temporary liner installed on select areas of the side slopes, as shown in the green. These areas have demonstrated higher hydrogen sulfide presence, and this liner will function as a type of blanket in those areas to enable the gas wells to better collect the hydrogen Actually, I'm going to just go back, just for the purposes, this lot, some of the slides have various components high way, this is just everything tied together. And now I'm going to discuss phase two. Phase two with the liner capping solution. The existing deposit will need to be adjusted to provide proper closure grades and stormwater management. In general, the goal is to minimize any disturbance of the strategic environmental partner to S E P, S E P fill material. And the colors that are represented on the table, and you'll be able to see these when you download them, represent where you either have to raise or lower the grades to achieve the grades for closure. In addition, one of the goals is to optimize onsite fill and minimize the amount of trucks coming into the site. There will be areas, as shown right here, where we're going to be using onsite fill to regrade. But please note that the dashed line that I highlighted here is the approximate limit of the S E P fill. The fill that we're trying to use on site is outside of that and not trying to disturb that. There will be, just one sec. There will be approximately nine thousand yards of material imported in fill that will be needed to achieve this grading prior to the cap. Just want to briefly go over the cap profile across sections. I'm going to work from the bottom up. So the regraded subgrade that's right here, the bottom of the cap, is that regrading that I just showed. There will then be a six-inch layer of clean fill, followed by impermeable geomembrin on top. This membrane is what prevents the hydrogen sulfide from being released and as well as prevents the rainwater or water from infiltrating into the fill. Above that will be a geocomposite drainage net, which basically collects any water that infiltrates through the above fill, and that would then also be handled at the store. And above the geocomposite drainage net will be about eighteen inches of fill that is clean fill that will be brought on site, and the final restoration would be grace. There will be a need to import clean material to achieve the disclosure. The table shown here shows the various capping points I just mentioned, what their associated volumes, and approximate limited truck trips. The bottom table represents an approximate range of expected truck trips. As Tom had mentioned earlier, there's going to be some vehicles in the summer versus stockpile of the material, and the whole of the material that those truck trips will drop off. And then, next spring, to wrap things up, there will be an increase in the truck traffic for approximately two months. So this is a basic grading that's associated with closure. I'm now going to start talking about the stormwater component. This component, the stormwater component, just please keep in mind that it is above the liner. So in these slides, I'm going to be talking about swales and downsheets. And for those of you who may or may not be familiar with them, on the right, on the left side, is a grassline swell, just to give you an example visual. And then, when I mentioned downshoots and gavial line, this would be an example of a downshoot. And you can see here where the gavians are, that's a rocks on a wire mesh basket. So on the top of the landfill will be a series and a network of grassline swales, which will collect and convey stormwater off of the landfill. The collected stormwater will be routed to the gavial line downshoots, as well as the gavial line swales that are at the toe or the bottom of the fill area. These stormwater would then be routed to a new stormwater detention basin, and that basin would be underlined by a geomembrin liner. In addition, there will be a set road for that will go around the perimeter of the landfill for, that road will be fifteen foot wide and is stone roadway. There will also be an access road from that road down to the treatment area. That road will be paved. Next slide. This ties, when you're done, this ties all the components I just discussed. At this time, I just wanted to provide a couple more photos of some typical landfill capping installation. On the top left is an example of the geopop centrals that let changes that may overlay on the geomembrin. On the bottom left is that covers the soil that is being placed on top of the liner. And last, is an example photo of a post or closed landfill. Once hydrogen sulfide concentration and the concentrations reduce over time, and the current internal treatment system is no longer appropriate for the site, that equipment will be shut down and removed from the site, and a long-term system will be incorporated. There are long-term treatment technologies available. I've provided a couple as an example, such as biological or media. But at this time, there's a need for further evaluation of data, and that data is going to be collected over the next several months. This long-term solution will be incorporated when the site conditions allow for a less I'd like to wrap things up now and just go give a quick overview of the anticipated schedule. Gas well and piping construction, that phase one, is anticipated to start in the next couple of weeks in March, and be completed by the end of May. The phase two closure contract for the liner capping portion and the contractor order of mobilization is anticipated in the May to May to June timeframes. In July, it's anticipated that the contractor sort of begins importing the material needed for closure into September. Then the work associated with the capping and liner will begin in September. There is a milestone completion before the geomembrin or synthetic liner by the end of this calendar year. Next spring is when the contractor would complete the cap, and then that additional fill that would be put on top of the, on top of the liner. At this time, I'd like to say thank you for your time. And yes, back over to.